Good morning, Mr Chairman.
Good morning and welcome to the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee meeting. I'd like to extend a special welcome to young Alfie Harris, who we've got with us. He's a sixth form politics student, so he's with us this morning just to get a little bit of insight into what we do. Welcome Alfie. My name is councillor Mike Brooks and this is my first meeting as the newly appointed chairman for this committee. I was chairman for six years prior to being the vice chairman and chairman of the county council, so I'm looking forward to being back here again in this position and working with everybody in the position of chairman. And also before I go move any further, I'd like to thank councillor Alex Hall here at Masseyd, who's vice chairman of the committee, and for the job that he's done over the last few months as chair in the committee, he's done a really good job, but unfortunately through his commitments to his farming work and everything, he wasn't able to continue in this position. So, thank you. Can I remind you that the audio visual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcast live via the county council's website? And with this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public watching this live. I would like to begin with a health and safety announcement. There is no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through the reception into the front car park. We then need to wait in the car park until further instructions are issued. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobile laptops and iPads are on silent for the duration of this meeting? May I remind you that the hearing loop is now activated also. Request to speak will be collated by the vice chairman, Alex, and when invited to speak, you should press the button on your microphone unit to make it live, then press again when you finish your contribution. We will now move into the formal agenda. I will now pass over to Rob Close for the first item on the agenda, which is apologies for absence. Over to you, Rob.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Strangle for who we've replaced councillor Ashton, councillor Gibson, who's observing the meeting online, and we've also received apologies from councillor Rawlings and councillor Wright. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, on to item two on the agenda then, declaration of members' interests. Do any members wish to declare any interests? No? Well then, move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the minutes of the meeting of the committee on Monday the 25th of April. The item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record, and that's on pages five to 12 of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposal to accept those minutes? Councillor Rowe, thank you. Councillor Rowe proposes that we accept those minutes. Do I have a second for that? Minutes? Somebody who was present at the meeting. Thank you councillor Hall. Seconded by councillor Hall. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Are there any against? Are there any abstentions? I would say members who weren't present at that meeting. Thank you. So that's clearly carried. Thank you. Councillor Vernon, did you want to say something?
May I just give my apologies for arriving late this morning? Thank you.
Thank you. Right, so that is carried and agreed, the minutes of the last meeting, and I'll sign those later. Right, I'll move on to the item four on the agenda now, announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. I have no announcements this morning with the exception of one point of clarity around the item six titled 'Speed Limits Review: Task and Finish Group Progress Update'. The item title is misleading, and therefore the record should reflect that the title is 'Speed Limits and Traffic Management Proposed Interim Review'. We'll get back to this further on in the agenda. That is an agenda item. We have a lighter agenda today with one scrutiny report and two verbal presentations, items to take. Nevertheless, may I ask officers to summarise key points and the points asked by councillors, and may I remind all the importance of succinct questions and contributions? Executive councillor announcements. Are there any announcements by councillor Richard Davis? No? Thank you councillor Davis. Senior officers announcements. Are there any announcements to be made by Jonathan Evans, or Sam? Jonathan's not here at the moment. No? No senior officers announcements. Thank you. I'll now move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is the Gainsborough Transport Strategy 2022, and the scrutiny report is on pages 13 to 70 of the agenda pack. And this item invites the committee to consider and comment on a report which sets the final update on the Gainsborough Transport Strategy and the main Gainsborough Transport Strategy 2022 documents. In terms of actions, the committee is invited to review and comment on the contents of the Gainsborough Transport Strategy 2022 documents. And the report and a visual presentation will be delivered by Carl Gibson, senior project leader, Highways Infrastructure. Carl is in the chamber, and I'll hand over to Carl now to do that presentation. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Good morning, everybody. So this morning I've brought the new Gainsborough Transport Strategy, so this is the first strategy that follows on from the Lincoln Transport Strategy and also the recently adopted Local Transport Plan Five. It's been slightly delayed because of obviously the pandemic and just to get a feel for what changes may have happened during and following the pandemic to do with travel patterns and things, but also it was timely that we could follow the actual father document ready for these transport strategies, which is the local transport plan. So what I've brought is just a few slides just to talk through the main points that are in the transport strategy and just highlight some of the things that we might do. So just the overview, so there's a process that we follow for the transport strategies, where we look at what the current and future challenges are in and around Gainsborough. There was a number of engagement events which took place in Marshalls Yard and at the golf club, which involved the general public, county and district members from the local area, as various officers and other interest groups. All this information was gathered together to identify the key issues that needed resolving really, and also look into the future of what potential growth was planned around Gainsborough and what that impact may have on Gainsborough and its surrounding area. We then developed a vision objectives, which we made sure aligned with the Local Transport Five, and then sifted through various options to come to the final list of options and a delivery plan and final report. Next slide. So this slide just reiterates really about how we have used the Local Transport Plan, which is like I say, it's really the father document for all the urban transport strategies that we're developing. And then, as you can see, it leads through into the division and the key objectives of the transport strategy. Next slide, please. Now, there was a number of mitigations and interventions that were identified, so after the sifting process, what we've done is we've actually divided the various elements up to, as you can see on the diagram on the slide, five different areas. So one are the key pillars, so these are what we call the backbone of the transport strategy. So these are the things that we think will have the most impact, the things that most will meet the LTP Five vision objectives as well as the transport strategy objectives. And following on from that, we've got supporting interventions, which again, not as critical as we see as the key pillars, but you know, equally as important really in the fact that they will also contribute to help movement of people around Gainsborough. There's also things like strategic interventions, so these are things where the local authorities or highways authority don't have direct control, but we have an influence, so this could be anything to do with national highways or the train operators or network rail. And then we've got connected strategies, so obviously transport doesn't exist in its own right, it links with various other different strategies, not just across the council, but you know, government policies and things like that. So there's certain things in there, in the transport strategy, that will require, you know, connections with say like education and things like that and social services. And then there's some other interventions and packages, which at this point, it's sort of too early to actually make those formalised within the strategy. So these could be things that, for instance, in Gainsborough, there's always been talk about a second bridge over the Trent. So within the strategy, we think we've got a package of measures that doesn't require that at this stage, but it makes sense that towards the end of the strategy that we keep monitoring that situation and see what happens with travel patterns in the future. You know, the strategy does go up to 2036, which mirrors the length of the local plan. And these things are also reviewed every five years anyway. So next slide, please. So I'm not going to go through all the different elements in there because they're all in the transport strategies, so you can view at your leisure, but just some of the key points in there that you'll notice is that it's not all highway capital schemes. There's a variation, so we've got EV package, that links down from the local transport plan. We've got a parking strategy that would need to be developed. We've got the cycling/walking network plans, which tries to come up with a network, a safe network for walking and cycling within Gainsborough. And you may have seen these in other urban areas that have been developed. We've got the flood road and town centre junction improvement package, so this was work around the Trent Bridge leading up to Thorne Diet Way and that whole area, and it was about how we can better help with, you know, in peak times, there's a bit of a history of queuing back over the bridge down the flood road, so it's looking at a scheme that can sort of relieve that a bit more. And also one of the schemes in there is looking at the town centre, environmental improvements, so this is linked to the West Lindsay's levelling up fund, which they were successful for. Now, a lot of that is actually within highway control land or maintained by the highway at least, so we will have an active part to play in that. And also, one of the key things that people were bringing up was Beaumont Street, so that's the street that runs between Marshalls Yard, if you know Gainsborough, and the market place, and it does act as a bit of a, it's one of the key routes into Gainsborough. Very difficult to shut it down and take traffic out of there because there isn't really any alternative routes, so it's looking at trying to make that a better environment for pedestrians and particularly trying to help that connectivity between the market place itself and that retail area, which is Marshalls Yard. Next slide, please. So next we've got the supporting interventions, so again, these are things which will help enhance the key pillars. So we've got a clean air package in there, we've got ticketing, so this is looking at fully integrated contactless payments on buses and bike hire schemes and things like that. We've got a sharing package, which looks at, again, e-bikes and cycle hire. And we've got the active travel package within there, which is more to do with the sort of wayfinding and signing around Gainsborough, because if anybody's walked around Gainsborough, there's quite a lot of signs and stuff, but they don't tend to take you to the place where you think you may be going. So we think that needs a bit of a review and help people, particularly from, say, Lee Road railway station getting into the town centre. And then, we're calling it a Sue package, but these are the works for the development that's on Foxby Lane, which were secured through a section 106 agreement, so there's various improvements planned, which some are already happening and some that will happen in the future. Next slide, please. And then just linking on to the strategic and connected interventions, so again, as I mentioned, we've got a strategic signing, a review of that, we've got, you know, land use, so that's all linked to your local plan. We've got it supporting net zero, and we've identified that we want to see about getting some rail service improvements as well for both the central station and Lee Road stations. Next slide, please. So just quickly, just to show some plans of the sort of things which I've just described, so on this plan, it just highlights the sort of thing that we're planning on Beaumont Street with that corridor, which is obviously improving that whole environment from when it was, I think it was Marshalls engineering down there at one point. So, you know, it's never really been reflected, now it's sort of more retail and pedestrian friendly. We've got the bus station, public realm, so again, this is linked up with the work with mobility hubs that are in the transport strategy and the levelling up proposals. So again, you know, the bus station is looking quite tired, so that could do with some work. And again, I've mentioned the market square, frontage and public realm enhancements. Next slide, please. So one of the key things you may have seen from the Lincoln Transport Strategy are mobility hubs, so with Lincoln, sorry, Gainsborough, we've already got the Lee Road railway station, we've got the central railway station, and we've got the existing bus stations. What we're looking to do there is sort of enhance the facilities there, working with various partners to make them more of an integrated hub. And one of the issues has always been the sort of connectivity, particularly between Lee Road and the centre of Gainsborough, and making it easier for people to get into the town centre. So that will be linked in with like a city centre bush shuttle and things like that, but there'll be electric vehicle charging points, you know, e-bike hires, delivery lockers, you know, there's obviously people looking at parking in, particularly around Lee Road again. And much to my surprise, which I'm seeing in the press, is a, what I considered was a, well, if we can possibly look at this at some point in the future, it would be a good thing, and if we have the opportunity, was a sort of a park and stride mobility hub on the other side of the Trent with a pedestrian footbridge effectively, straight into the centre of town. So again, that's very much long term and, you know, the stars have to rely on for that to come off because obviously that's in Nottinghamshire, so it would require some close negotiations. Next slide, please. So these are sort of supporting interventions, so there's various, I've got targeted junction improvements, so this is very much the hotspots really of junctions within Gainsborough where we will have to start looking at the impact on these junctions and future development. But again, this just depends on what happens with the growth of housing over the next 15 to 20 years, to see whether we have to do that level of intervention. And again, I've already mentioned the key pillar improvements at the flood road and the town centre. And one other thing we're just looking at is a potential bus priority, which is on A631 at Heepen Road, and it's just providing like a bus gate through onto the north side of Heepen Road, which leads you past through the primary schools and back into the town centre. Next slide, please. So this is sort of like the last slide, so I think this is just to highlight the fact that, you know, electrification, there's a piece of work that's going on at the moment, looking at electrification in Lincolnshire, which is coming out of the Local Transport Five, so again, all these transport strategies have to reflect that father document, you know, so obviously we're going to be looking at electrification within Gainsborough over the next five to 10 years. So the only, the last thing I'd just like to say is that, you know, people may be asking about, well, where's all the money coming from for these different interventions? So, you know, the key thing, it's a bit like the local plan, where, you know, we have to create a strategy or a plan of what we'd like to do and why we'd like to do it. So this is very much related to, you know, government DFT, if we want to bid for money, this is what they're expecting, so we've got a proper plan of action. And the monitoring of the delivery of all the transport strategies are looked after by a delivery board, which is generally chaired by councillor Davis, and it's made up of various local members and officers from the district council and the county council. And I hope you endorse this strategy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl, for that presentation. I'll open it up, before I open it up for questions and comments, I've failed to mention at the start of the meeting that we have Nicole Hilton, the Assistant Director of Transport, who has joined the meeting via Teams, so she's joined it virtually, and is present at the meeting this morning. And I just wondered if Nicole had got anything that she would like to add at this point? Nicole?
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, everybody. It's lovely to start with a new chair, but no, nothing specific to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, I'll open it up to members then, if any comments or questions from members. Councillor Mrs Austin.
I want to get a very negative comment out of the way, please. I don't know Graham Gainsborough particularly well. All right, I've been there three, four, five times, but in the meeting papers, not part of the strategy, it would have been a tremendous help if we could have had a map of Gainsborough. I was with, well, you know, with half my brain looking at reading this over the weekend at home, and with my personal iPad on Google Maps, trying to stretch it out to find where streets were and so on, it was very, very hard work. I really would have appreciated, not in the details of the strategy necessarily, but in the meeting papers, I would have appreciated a map. Okay? That's my negative out of the way now.
Thank you, councillor Austin. I think we'll have to take that on as a learning point for future reports. Carl? Thank you. Right, councillor Kev Clark. Councillor Clark?
Thank you, Chairman. On page 63, there's a reduce the need to travel, and it says the ability, more people, the ability to work, learn, manage healthcare, shop, earn, socialise without the need to travel. I'm just wondering, how does that sit with promoting the town centres now?
Carl?
It's a challenge, I think that's the best way I can describe it really. I know that when we're dealing with the Lincoln Transport Strategy and the Gainsborough Transport Strategy, that's the thing that not just the county council, but the district councils and retail are trying to battle with about what particularly market places may transform into. And it may not be like it was in the 70s and the 80s with your main chains, it may be more of a social gathering type activities with, as you probably see, it's already merging with coffee shops and things like that and festivals and things and markets. But I think, you know, the reality is that with what was forced upon us through the pandemic, it did provide people more options to do things online or from home, and particularly when they were forced not to travel as well. And obviously that's now leaked, you know, it's leaked away from that. But, you know, online retail is still very, very high and stuff, but I think it's not just a challenge for local authorities, it's a challenge for the actual businesses themselves about how you get that balance between the two.
Thank you, Carl. Have we got any more questions or comments? Councillor Vernon, Charlotte?
Thank you, Chairman. Just following on from councillor Clark's comments regarding that, I think I too was concerned about the influencing travel behaviour on page 41. I'm not sure how much engagement we have had with local employers at this stage, but I feel that will be absolutely essential if we are to try and encourage this travel plan to be a success. I think it's also relevant to page 48 and the collaboration between West Lindsay and Lincolnshire County Council. We must extend this down to businesses, residents and schools and whatnot, and try and ensure that everybody's working collaboratively to make this a success. May I also refer to page 30, when we talk about access to health and social care. I recognise that this is a transport sort of scrutiny group, so it may not be directly relevant, but we talk about in the report how the ageing population will need more access to health and social care, and I'm concerned about the point where it raises it being provided digitally. I don't think there is, there can be any substitute for face-to-face appointments in some circumstances, and whilst I'm not sure directly relevant to this panel, I think it's important that we recognise there will still be people who do need to go to face-to-face appointments, and we need to support them to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Vernon. Carl? Anything you wish to, I mean, a thread in there that you mentioned in the report was a public engagement strand ongoing, so I think that very much fits in with the comments that have been made by members.
Yes, absolutely, and like I say, the key thing is it's a transport strategy, but it's to set the plan for Gainsborough, so it's not, you know, it's been produced by Lincolnshire County Council, but it very much requires engagement and collaboration with lots of different stakeholders, whether that be the district council, even the town council, developers, everybody, so any of the mitigations and interventions that get taken forward, particularly those where there's like other strategies are required, there will have to be another level of public engagement and commitment from people.
Thank you for that, Carl. Before we go any further, I'm going to, I'm going to bring councillor Perrott and Williams in, who's joined the meeting virtually, and I was asked if she could speak. She's the executive support councillor for Highways and Transport, and is a Gainsborough member, so I'm going to bring her in at this point, if that's okay. Thank you. Claire?
Hello, sorry, just as I go to speak, I just burst into tears, so apologies for that. Sorry. I was just going to mention before councillor Vernon spoke actually, that we, I have to say that the Gainsborough Transport Strategy, out of most of them, we've had massive involvement from lots of other people, from the district and from other stakeholders, which I was actually quite pleased about, and is almost quite unique from the transport strategies, as obviously we have consultation from the other, the district and businesses and whatnot, but the district, West Lindsay, has been very involved in this one. I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you, councillor Perrott and Williams. Right, I've got councillor Alison Austin, who's indicated speaking. Councillor Ashton, I'm told, sorry. Councillor Ashton.
Thank you very much. First of all, genuinely welcome the report and what is clearly a huge amount of work, research, of effort, of analysis that have gone into bringing forward what is clearly a comprehensive and detailed and strategic approach to how transport works in Gainsborough. I would say, I appreciate, I'm only a substitute member on this committee, but I kind of share councillor Austin's concerns of personally not quite understanding how Gainsborough works, because it's not somewhere that I go through or visit very often, and it might be something for when these transport plans come forward, perhaps to go and go and have a look as a kind of, as a, as a site visit, just to get a feel for, for how these things work together. But for my part, I'm delighted to see rail featuring significantly in this document. On page 52, I'm pleased to say that the train in that picture has already been abolished, being an old pacer thing, and the rail services on this, on, on the line through Gainsborough has already improved. But obviously there are two stations in Gainsborough. Gainsborough Town, of course, always featuring as somewhere that is underused and with, with much capacity to improve services on that line, which for the most part is freight only. So really pleased to see that there and I look forward to seeing proposals coming forward from rail operators and others over the coming years to how to make better use of rail for Gainsborough.
Thank you, councillor Ashton. Do you wish to make any other comments on that, Carl? Add to that?
No, just really to endorse it, really. It was, obviously the rail is a key factor, particularly in Gainsborough and, you know, like I say, one of the, the biggest things that were coming out from the engagement events and not just from the public, but from businesses or whoever, was, you know, Lee Road Station, which is, you know, obviously Gainsborough's central station, had a quite bit of money spent on it in the fairly recent past. Lee Road Station, when I was living in Gainsborough, when I was, you know, I was born there and I used to come to college, it was manned and, you know, you could park there and it had a shop and stuff and then it became a garden centre. So, you know, there's work to be done there. I understand, again, from the local transport plan, that that sort of activity is already starting, not just for Gainsborough, I think there's, you know, five other railway stations. So, yeah, that's, hopefully that's, will turn into a proper working mobility hub for Gainsborough.
Thank you, Carl. Are we any, any, councillor Austin, councillor Mrs Austin?
Right, I still feel I'm on a learning experience regarding Gainsborough. There's a number of towns that are as mentioned or referred to, obviously the city of Lincoln, but Newark, Doncaster, I don't think they necessarily mention Redford. But are people on the whole going from Gainsborough to those other towns? Or is Gainsborough a centre that draws people from over the county boundary? Because the trend is the boundary, isn't it? And I just wondered how much they are trying to attract people from elsewhere or how much they are, their people are trying to get out. It obviously makes a little bit of difference as to things like parking and those sort of issues.
Thank you, Carl.
Well, as somebody who left in the nineties from Gainsborough, I think things have changed a little bit over the last sort of 10, 15 years. So I know that they have been desperately trying to get investment into Gainsborough. Just looking purely at the traffic, there was always talk that most people are just trying to get through, sort of out to the coast, coming over the bridge and going straight out to Skegness or wherever, or they're using the Trent Bridge to come to Lincoln, because there's not that many crosses, I think Dunham Bridge is probably the next one down. In actual fact, when you look at the traffic, it's about a third, third, third split, a third are actually coming into Gainsborough in the morning peak hours, so obviously working or going to school, a third are going out to the east and a, a third are going south. Obviously, a lot of investment around Marshall's Yard, so I know that's had a big impact on the, particularly the weekend visitors and things like that. And, yeah, I think it's, you know, it's definitely a town that needs more investment in it. It's been run down for quite a few years, lost a lot of its industry. So, yeah, hopefully things will improve. But I think the, there would have been an, an exodus of people of, you know, working or going to college or anything, but I think it's already slightly changed now.
Can I just follow up, Chair? So, in other words, part of the strategy is hoping to attract people into Gainsborough rather than facilitate them going out or round it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Austin. Are we any other comments? Can't see anybody indicating. I'd just like to, before I sort of go on, just to, to say that we have got the Local Transport Strategy Board that will, which are in place for all of these transport strategies and that has got representation from West Lindsay District Council and the County Council. And those boards will be meeting regularly to monitor progress and look at progress on this strategy, as they do on all of them. And I think they're a really good thing because they, they, they stop it just being put on a shelf and forgotten about. The strategy will be a live document and it'll be something that would be, be looked at and looking for action on, on a regular basis by the Transport Strategy Board. So I just thought that was worth mentioning at this point in the meeting. And also the point on a map perhaps with the reports in future and consider councillor Ashton's suggestion, possible site visits going forward. But we'll see what we can do around those things to make members who are perhaps not as familiar with a particular town or area where we're having a strategy for, more familiar to, so when they're considering the report. Okay? Well, thank you for your questions and comments. This now concludes the discussion on the item and I'm going to move that the committee endorses this report and that our comments are captured and are taken under consideration when finalising the Gainsborough Transport Strategy documents. Does anyone dissent? And if so, please indicate no. No, nobody dissenting, so thank you, that is agreed. Thank you for that. Right, I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda now, which is the speed limit review, task and finish you progress update. But that, again, may I remind members that the presentation you should, you're about to receive is being reflected as the speed limits and traffic management proposed interim review and not as shown on the agenda. We'll hear more about this from Sam Headworth, Head of Highways Infrastructure, who's in the chamber. And before I move over to, to you, Sam, I would like to raise a point for clarity that this committee in September 2021 proposed to the OVO and scrutiny management board a topic for in-depth review around traffic management in Lincolnshire. This was approved and is currently pending allocation to one of the scrutiny panels in a subsequent round of scrutiny reviews. That's just position where we are with this review of speed management. In terms of our actions, the committee is invited to consider and debate the proposed plans for an interim review of speed limits and traffic management. So with that, I'll hand over to Sam to bring us up to date on this.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning all. You've done some of my work there, councillor Brooks, in explaining some of that at the start, because I think that's really important to, as has been the miscommunication about the title, I think setting that tone is good. So yes, we, we, obviously this scrutiny committee put forward to OSMB about wanting to review this, this particular area and that still stands. And it's a, it's a, it's a case of having a scrutiny panel that's available to do so. However, in advance of that, I don't think this, this group or all the officers that are present there needs to sort of sit and wait for that. So the intention today is just to give a very quick sort of verbal update in advance of July's scrutiny committee, either way we'll come with a formal report. So as part of the traffic management review, as was suggested in September and further in December, we're going to expand that to include a review of speed limits. But that is not the driver of the review, that is one part of it. So I just, if I give a, as the slide is on the screen, if I give a quick overview. So we see the general review being that traffic management plan review, which within that, what we're sort of, an officer idea is to refer to as the managing network safely in Lincolnshire. Again, this is stressed, this is just some sort of advanced work that we've done in isolation as officers and we'll bring this forward in July for a formal review and then that, I'll come on to the sort of the second stage. So within that work in safely, we have four threads in, in our, in our officer mind that are, have a relationship between them, that being the traffic policy for schools, the traffic regulatory orders, which within it has some key elements, which I'll come on to in a moment, the speed limit policy review, as we've discussed. And it's worth, say, it's not just about, you know, 20 mile speed limits and things like that, that, that will, our intention is that would probably also include the emerging active travel programme, while keeping in mind things like the environmental act. And it is worth stressing at this point that there is, with all these, these documents to review, there are statutory and legislative processes to go through. So there'll be things that we can propose, we can do, there are things that we would have challenged and there's things that we bluntly can't legally. And there may be that whatever you do with one prohibits another. So there is a very close connection between all, all of these things, which is why there needs to be reviewed as one if we're going to review the overall traffic management plan. And then finally, just that traffic carrying policy review, again, integral to the rest of it. So the elements within the TRO, the Traffic Regulation Order, we envisage looking at the environmental weight limits, the weighting limits, the weight restrictions and the lorry watch. The lorry watch is, is a relative, I'll just quickly put, put some of that, that's a relatively new. As many in, on, on this committee will know, there are limitations to what the higher authority of this council can do from a, an authoritative state. However, we're working closely with VOSA in, where, where we do have reported lorries acting in a way that they're not prohibited to do so, we can work with VOSA, find details of that, look at axle weights and report back and then write to that, that company. So we have a more evidence base, even if we don't have the actual legal orders to do, to enact the enforcement. So that, that's really it from this point, it's just to give, it was just a flavour to give an idea, this is how we sort of envisage it from, from an officer, an officer position. But we're going to come back in July, so in a couple of months' time, with a formal paper with, with recommendations to actually start a working group, which we would envisage a number of members sitting within. And then that gets us ahead for when a scrutiny panel does come available within, as, as instructed through to OSMB, that we're, for want of a better word, ahead of the game. You know, we've got our proprietary work in place and my understanding is that might be sort of early next year, so that gives us plenty of time this year to start thinking about what would we want it to look like as a committee. So I'll pause there and ask if there's any questions or any clarifications.
Thank you for that, Sam. Just to, sort of a little bit more clarification on that, the idea is that we have this working group to work with officers, try to do some background work, getting this all ready to go to a scrutiny review panel when there is room for one of the scrutiny review panels to take it, which will be probably next spring sometime. Thank you. Have we any members wishing to speak? Councillor Ashton, councillor Ashton, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this is very much at the beginning of this process of review. A couple of things that I would add into the debate, and I don't know whether these could be picked up in the scope of this. First of all is the constitutional arrangements around consultation and review. And the example I give is sometimes there's stuff that comes to planning a regulation committee on the back of a single consultee response, which, I mean, the example, I'll give you, in Tattersall Thorpe, we had an objection from one local resident whose objection to extending the speed limit was, I'd rather you spend the money on potholes. Well, that seemed a little bit excessive for that, to have to come back to planning a regulation, to have that report written, the presentation, everything to go through, through that process, when realistically, I, my, my impression would be that that would be a straightforward officer delegation decision, that that consultee response wasn't really relevant to what we were trying to get at. But, so whether there's anything that could be picked up around what is coming to planning a regulation, whether some of this stuff needs to come back, just because it's had one single objection, whether there's a better balance in member calling or local member involvement in, as to whether that would, that would need to follow that route. And the other thing is around local member involvement in sort of borderline cases or cases where there is a general feeling that something needs to be done, but it just falls between the cracks in policy that it doesn't meet any of the criteria, but there is still one or two places around the county, certainly in my division, I'm sure colleagues elsewhere have the same experience, that there are one or two places, junctions for instance, where there aren't any fronting houses, but standing there, it feels patently dangerous. But as I say, it just misses out on the criteria that we've got at the moment and it's where the places like that could be picked up in, in whatever criteria we look at going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ashton. I'll feed that over to Sam for a comment on that. Sam?
Thank you for that. I think that just reinforces exactly what we're proposing, is to have a working group and that it clearly cannot be officer in isolation, because there are processes considered, democratic processes of how things become approved. And I think one of the first things at the start when that working group is, is formed is what is the scope of what, of what we're reviewing? Clearly, we're, we've done a little bit of work about the technical element, but there may be an extension to look at how actually the, the democratic processes of work within that.
Thank you, Sam. Councillor Kev Clark?
Thank you, Chairman. Class some clarification on what you clarified. In September, in September, there was a question put forward about a 20 mile speed limit and it said it was going to be brought back to this committee. I always say now this is part of the traffic management plan and we'll have to wait till early in the next year for it. Thank you.
I'll, I'll hand this to Kiara because she will explain exactly where we are.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. So councillor Clark, back in September, when that question was raised at council, the decision to go forward and put forward a topic around traffic management review in Lincolnshire was already made in sort of the July, August period previously, and it was ratified in September by the overview and scrutiny management board. So what happened later was that, and councillor Davis is here to correct me if I am wrong, it was agreed that the review could include that speed limits, 20 miles per hour, as, as, as a thread to be reviewed, in addition to what was already proposed to be reviewed by this committee. So what is going to happen is, as soon as the process of a working group, should this be approved, be initiated, the work will be completed within a period inclusive of up to three meetings for this working group. So in theory, we should be able to transition very smoothly from the proactive preliminary work to actually a full in-depth review of traffic management in Lincolnshire, which would include speed limits. Thank you.
Is that okay, councillor Clark? Yeah. I think what happened is that prior to the item being brought up at four council about 20 mile an hour speed limits, this committee had already put forward traffic management as a scrutiny review proposal to overview and scrutiny management board. And so that, and that was accepted as a review to be done within this four-year cycle of this council, but it wasn't one of the two that were chosen to go first. And those two subjects- but it wasn't one of the two that were chosen to go first, and those two subjects are being considered at the moment by the scrutiny panels, and then when they're finished, next spring, they will be allocating more items to those two scrutiny panels, of which we hope, one of them is the traffic management in Lincolnshire, which will include the speed management and the 20 mile an hour limit. Is that okay? That's a, it is, but I think, thank you. councillor Austin, yes, and Mrs Austin.
Thank you. Can I address Sam through the chair? Was I imagining it, or did I hear you say something about weight limits? Because how do you enforce weight limits? You could have all the policies in the world, but if you don't enforce it, and probably more than potholes, this is the one thing I get moaned about more than others by my residents, and my only answer is, well, if you get a chance, get the name on the side of the lorry, ring them up and tell them your lorry at such and such a time was on the road that it shouldn't have been on, but, you know, it is how you enforce it that concerns me.
Sam?
Yes, it is a challenge. So, yeah, we have weight limits, but it, but the authority, the, the county council doesn't have the powers to enforce that. However, we are doing what we can within the powers that we do have, hence the lorry watch situation where we're working closely with Vosa. Yes, there's no enforcement, but to gain who those, those reported back that are driving against the limits of what they're supposed to, or in areas that we're not supposed to, and write to those companies. That, that is a, a step further than clearly that the authority's position is, but I think it's the right step, but unfortunately, we, at this present time, we don't have the enforcement powers to do anything with it, but that clearly doesn't mean that we shouldn't have weight limits, otherwise it, it will, what, what you tend to find is, the vast majority of people do follow the weight limits, and you're, and the, and the people picking up are those that don't. If you remove them entirely or didn't enforce them in any way, then you would be absolutely covered in people that are going through there inappropriately. So it is a challenge, it is a, an ongoing challenge, but I think we're working really proactively and forwardly, and what we can within the authority, we do have to do something about it.
Thank you, yes councillor Austin.
Supplemented again, as I'm liable to do, but who can enforce it? Well, I suppose the police, but if, but, but there's always that get out clause, except for access. What is access? Because it may be the shortcut from point A to point B, you know, the industrial estate, which it tends to be in my area, but it's not the only access, it's just the access that their sat nav tells them to use.
So you're right, it is the police that do the enforcement. Accesses would be, would be determined on a case-by-case basis by the police through their enforcement and investigatory process if they were to enforce it.
Yeah, I think we're in danger of getting into the sort of things that the working group and scrutiny review panel will be looking at, and we're, we're not going to sort that out here today, but it just gives a flavour of the sort of things that are going to have to be considered going forward and fed into this review process. Are there any more comments or questions? No, can't see any. So thank you for your questions and comments. This now concludes the discussions on this item, and so I'm going to move that the committee approves the officer proposals for commissioning a working group that will consist of officers and members, and that will be taken, tasked, and that, that will be tasked with the, in the review of existing policy and practice. The outcomes of this interim review will be reported back to the committee in this council year. So that's, do I have any dissenters from that? No, so that is carried then, and agreed. Thank you. All right, on to the next item on the agenda, which is levelling up schemes. This is a verbal presentation that aims to inform and update members of the levelling up schemes. Sam Edwards will give us again more information around these. In terms of our actions, the committee is invited to consider and comment on the contents of this verbal presentation. Over to you, Sam.
Thank you chairman. So yes, this is a verbal update, because I'm mindful that since we put the bid in, and we, we have put out some positive press, we haven't gone through the details of the scheme. So just, just to give a bit of background, so last year, obviously, there was an announcement from Central Government about a levelling up fund bid arrangement. We prepared a suite of schemes along the A16 as part, as part of our bid, and we were successful, which is fantastic, and that was just under £20 million. In advance of that announcement, what we did do, because there's part of the bid, as we get very little notice a lot of the time to prepare these things, hence why going back a couple of items, having the transport strategies is so important, to have the evidence base in place, because you have so little time to prepare bids. We selected the schemes, put them forward, and then we did a feasibility in advance to actually look at options of what we can do at the six, within the six different schemes, so that if we were successful, which clearly we were, that we've got a head start in actually defining exactly what scheme we're doing. So we did those feasibilities, they were completed towards the end of March this, this year, looking at different options within there, and they're all now defined. So the actual projects have moved on to detailed design, going through that element before we look to start the construction process. So I thought the easiest way is, if Kiara can share these slides, is I've got slides of, of each, of each of the schemes. So I'll go, I'll get, that's, that's the six projects, so starting from the north, we've got Marsh Lane Road Roundabout in Boston, and I'll go through each of these. Very closely related to that is the Active Travel Project in Boston. Running further to the south, you've got the Curtain Junction A16, and then moving down towards Spalding, you've got Greensell, and then the next roundabout is Springfield Road Roundabout, so two roundabout improvements, and again, there's a further Active Travel Project in Spalding, which is closely connected to the Springfield Road Roundabout Scheme. Next slide please. Before I go on a further, chairman, would it, what would be easier, me to go through all six schemes, or go through individual ones and then ask questions on individual schemes?
Thank you councillor Austin, yeah?
Austin, as the first three are in my patch, yes. Would have been nice to have perhaps known about them before, about 10 days ago, though, thank you.
Okay.
Go through them individually, I think, is the...
Okay, so the first scheme, as I say, is the Marsh Lane Road Roundabout. So you can kind of just see on the left-hand side, the light green is the new roundabout, so it's slightly positioned to the southeast of the existing, and larger than the existing roundabout. The key thing is, and I've got a pointer if my IT technology works, but obviously only those in the chambers will, will be able to see, the widening of, of the scheme is, is obviously moving the roundabout over and widening on the west side. Now currently, moving through that junction, you have two straight-on lanes, and following the complete, you will still have two straight-on lanes going into Boston. What the key is, is that right lane. Currently, that, that right lane going into Boston is a right and straight-on. What this will allow is a designated right turn lane. The reason for that is to improve the flow into the Marsh Lane Industrial Estate, because the thrust behind this bid was about improving the agri-food industry and the, and the freight network between those, those two areas. So a lot of H Gs wanting to get into the Marsh Lane Industrial Estate are stuck behind that, behind the traffic waiting to go into Boston in the morning peak, and this gives them the free flow while not impeding those wanting to go in, into Boston. Equally, exiting the Marsh Lane Industrial Estate, there's also a significant widening to create, to create two lanes where there's only one. So again, exiting from Marsh Lane, there's only one lane that you turn left and right, but H G V is wanting to turn left to go south on the A16 cart, because in the morning and, and evening peaks, they're, they're stuck behind traffic waiting to turn right. So the whole thrust of the scheme is about improving the connection from the A16 south into Marsh Lane and vice versa, to, like I say, to improve the connection through to the industrial estate. And I'll pause there if there's any specific questions on that junction.
Yes councillor Austin.
I hate to tell you though, that we already have, and it's not necessarily lorries, it is the sheer volume often of coastal traffic cars. It already tails back to Curtain on the A16, and I'm, this is what worries me, because you're taking a straight-on lane. The current right-hand lane has that option of turning right into the industrial estate, into Marsh Lane, but we need the two lanes getting you into Boston. And, you know, this is really what worries me, as soon as I saw that scheme, but with my, my area officer, about a week ago.
So, so maybe I didn't, I didn't explain it very well, but the, we, the current right-hand lane, which as you say is straight-on and right, that will become a right-only, but we're constructing a new lane to the left-hand side, so you've still got two lanes, as they're now going to Boston, but by building to the left, you take the traffic away from that right lane to have a designated right, so we are adding to not taking away. Correct.
Thank you for that clarification, Sam, thank you. I think you can move on there, thank you.
So the next scheme is the Boston Active Travel Scheme. So just as a connection, I apologise those who are joining online or elsewhere, they can't see the pointer, but just towards the southwest of, there's the roundabout, that is the Marsh Lane Roundabout that we just discussed. So they're effectively, the, this is a widening of the footway to provide a combined footway cycleway on the cycleway network, and providing improved crossing facilities. All but a couple of areas, this is compliant with the new L T M 120 design guide that the D F T has put forward as part of the levelling up fund scheme. And I think this is a really exciting scheme again, about giving alternative travelling patterns and better travelling patterns for those moving in a east-west direction, and again, going to work or schools or businesses that go through there. So it's likely that we will combine those schemes and deliver, at least as a construction process, and I'll come on to program later, as one project, because there's a, there's a connection between the two. So I'll pause there if there's any comments on that one.
Any comments, questions? No, thank you, Sam, you can move on.
So the third scheme is Curtain Junction. So this is taking the existing compact roundabout and transfer, transforming it into a signalised over traffic light junction. There's two drives for the scheme, the primary drive is actually safeguarding for the future, so there's a level of growth generally along this corridor, and in the future, that roundabout is, you know, in technical speakers called a compact roundabout, and it's the maximum size you can have already, it is over, it's almost over capacity for the size it is. So this is about safeguarding for the future. What it's also about is you'll notice in the A16 north and south, effectively you've got two lane approaches and two lane exits. This is for the ability that this junction in isolation, a good scheme, but actually that for future bids, whether that's levelling up from three, four, five, or other funding opportunities coming forward, you can effectively bid, we could bid for dual carriageway schemes, but you've already addressed what is usually the most difficult area, is addressing the junction in, in the first place. So from an operational and traffic management perspective, it's an easier scheme to deliver, so it's about the likelihood of getting, you know, a billion pounds to, to duel the whole thing is, is probably low, so instead we have to think a bit smarter and phases over a number of years on complementing each other. So again, quite an unusual layout for the junction, because the stagger's kind of the wrong way around, but it's, it, it should be a really exciting scheme, and like I say, safeguards for the future.
Are there any questions or comments on that? No? No? Councillor Ashton?
Thank you. I just couldn't quite make out from your diagram, is that preventing traffic crossing the A16 at that point, or does that somehow work its way across? Because I see you've got the two filter lanes in the middle, but can traffic go from one side to the other?
Sam?
Easiest one I've had yet, yes.
You know, it's signalised junction, isn't it?
Yes.
So, yeah, thanks. Okay, yeah, I think, oh councillor Austin, you want to...
I want to say, can I talk to you afterwards, Sam?
Of course, of course.
Outside the meeting, thank you.
Thank you for that. I think, carry on there, Sam, thank you.
Yeah, so the next junction will be Greensell Road Roundabout, so this is, this, these two schemes are the bigger sort of physical schemes, but probably on par with traffic movements as the, as the Marsh Lane Scheme. So you can kind of see on the left-hand side, sort of in, in sort of shaded white in the background, that's the existing size of the roundabout, so as many that drive that or know that, it is a substandard roundabout, it's far too small, and in theory, you can get two H G Vs round, in practice, never, and it's a real sticking point for the area. So you can see that the size of roundabout will be significantly larger than it is now. There will be landtake to the north and the east on the two quadrants on that side to move the lanes out. You'll also, when travelling in from the southeast, wanting to turn left to go into Spalding, you'll have a designated lane as you get nearer to it, that'll be on a give way, and again, on all the junctions, you'll have a two-lane entry and a two-lane exit, so to, to improve flows through there. The one thing I would highlight is, we would have liked to have gone further with this scheme, particularly to the southeast, but the bridge there is of a, a constrained width, and the cost and the programme delivery of widening that bridge to facilitate two-lane entry and two-lane exit would have gone beyond the parameters of this funding bid. However, the roundabout is sized that should we, as an authority or other bids, want to, to do that, then you wouldn't have to revisit this, so there's no abortive works as, as part of that. And I suppose, just to highlight on this one, this is the only scheme of the six that we require landtake, all the others, we, we don't require landtake, it's all within the higher boundary, and we've also confirmed we don't need planning it for within permitted development. We've already made contact with the landowner and progressing that process already, and it's going well.
Thank you, Sam. Have we any comments or questions from members on that? No, we'll move on then, thanks.
Okay, the last junction improvement scheme is Springfield Road Roundabout. So this is the, where the A151 comes in from the east, and you've got the designer outlet village in the north-west of there. So to summarise, for those that know the works we did up at Rise Home Road Roundabout a year ago or so, in Lincoln on the northern bypass, it's a very similar proposal that we're putting in. So this is a spiral roundabout, that you actually move out as you travel around because of the size and scale and the number of traffic coming in from the minor arms. We've managed to do this within landtake by piping the ditches, they're very large ditches, the internal drainage board has allowed us to pipe those, so we can do that within the current landtake, which is fantastic, and it gives us, as you can see, three-lane exits and two, three-lane entrances and two-lane exits, and on the minor routes, two, two in, two out as well. Sorry, two in, one out. The reason for the one out is for the safety concerns with the turning movements around the McDonald's and the housing to the east. So really, I know I said it a few, but I think this one particularly is a very exciting, it's got a huge level of congestion and traffic, and much like we've seen on the Rise Home Road Roundabout on the north side of Lincoln, which is arguably busier than this junction traffic-wise, the traffic congestion practically disappeared overnight from opening it. Not to say it's perfect, but it, it was a massive impact, and we expect exactly the same at this junction, particularly when combined with the Greensell Roundabout improvements just to the next junction to the north as well.
Thank you, Sam. Any comments or questions councillor Petroyd? No, Richard?
Thank you chairman, thank you for allowing me to come in. You referred to the Rise Home Roundabout, and I just wondered, having that very close to sort of my patch, there's been comments about pedestrians being able to cross the free lanes. I just wondered whether there's any, anything like that's been put in at Spalding.
So as, sorry, so as part of the bid, we did consider a grade separated footbridge at this particular roundabout, but there's huge engineering challenges because of the, the developments that, that are in the air to actually physically put this in place. In addition, we would have definitely needed landtake outside the higher border, and definitely need a planning permission. Now, the study timeframe that goes with, with securing a, a scheme of that nature would mean we would fall out of the time restrictions required to spend and deliver these schemes within the levelling up fund bid. What we have done however, as part of the scheme, is improved and, and brought in the at-grade crossings, and also this scheme doesn't, although the challenges of physically putting this in place, doesn't prevent this being retrofitted later as a separate bid or a separate intervention.
Thanks, Sam. councillor Ashton?
Yeah, I'd just say, in the round, I hugely welcome all of these schemes, which clearly fit together and work together, particularly when you think of Springfield Roundabout. This is a major area snarl up at certain times of the day for traffic trying to get round Spalding or past Spalding, and solving that is a huge step in the right direction for getting HGVs and other vehicles up to Boston, up to that industrial estate, and around and about. I don't see at Springfield, there's going to be a huge demand for pedestrian wanting to go across the A16. I appreciate there isn't McDonald's there, but it feels more designed and aimed at passing vehicle traffic rather than people wandering in on foot from Spalding. But really pleased that you can possibly fit in that bridge at a later date if it's needed. But working together with the Greensell Roundabout, this feels to be a solution for Spalding, and it's not just a solution for Spalding, it's a solution for all of that traffic using the A16 coming up to the coast and elsewhere, so really, really welcome it.
Thank you, councillor Ashton. I know we've got councillor Clark who wants to speak.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, I'd like to echo what's been said, and it's good news that, you know, Lincolnshire's got that money after the government took £12.5 million. But what I'd really like to know, can you explain the process or the criteria for the allocation, selection of the projects, i.e. you mentioned bids?
Yeah, I mean, that might be something we want to take offline because it's a very detail in depth and I'd need to refer back to the documentation. What I would say is that the bid criteria is all online, and also so is LCC's submission that was put through and the evidence for that, and I can provide the links to those documents afterwards. I'm more than happy to have a chat about the detail that sits within that.
Thank you. Councillor, Mrs Austin.
Thank you. Two quick comments. One, councillor Ashton did say what I was going to do. I can't think that at Springfield Roundabout, there is the pedestrian footfall. I don't think I've ever seen anyone trying to get across the road there, and I use that road a lot. You talked about this spiral. Is that the same, just so I got it in my mind, is that the same basically as, is it the Holdingham Roundabout, where, for instance, I'm coming in usually admittedly on the right hand lane of the A, okay, the numbers right, the A17 from the Sleaford direction, Boston direction, and then gradually as I go around, I am moving out, aren't I? Yeah, as I'm then turning towards Lincoln. Is that what you mean?
That's exactly right. That's how they operate. As you move around, you pull out and there's clear lane designation before you get into it. The only difference with Holdingham is Holdingham does have traffic lights, whereas this one won't. So this will be similar to, like I say, Rise Home Road Roundabout. Also, Wisby Road Roundabout and Dodington Road Roundabout's on the western side of Lincoln as well.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, are we any other comments? Councillor Rowe.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Most of these roads are not ones that I would normally have much to do with, but with my children's services hat on, I've been travelling the last two or three months, and I suddenly recognised them and recognised their problems. I just wanted to compliment highways. It is only because of the preparation, the pre-work that we do, that we're able to get this money and get these bids. So I just wanted to highlight that and say, if I might, well done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rowe. I would echo that as well. Have we any more comments, questions? No. Therefore, I'm going to move on then and move that the committee endorse the contents of the verbal and...
I've just got one more. There's one more scheme, and then there's a quick program.
Sorry, jumping the gun there, sorry.
I'll be quick, I apologize. And just on the footfall, by the way, yes, there is low levels of footfall at that particular junction. If that increases through any development in the future, then that opens up alternative funding opportunity, for example, through section 106 through developer, if they're bringing in housing and so forth, then it seems reasonable to pay for those elements. But moving on to the last scheme, so this is the Active Travel Scheme in Spalding. This is arguably a more modest scheme than the Boston one, but again, for the benefits of those in the committee, Springfield Road Roundabout is about there. So we're just to the west, and this is the designer outlet there. And again, similar to the Boston one, improving the footway cycleway route in compliance with LTM 120 and the crossing facilities here as well. Again, providing better access from the town of Spalding to the places that people want to get. And this is one, as was the Boston, these are one of the schemes that came out of the walking cycling network plans, so we work quite closely with our Active Travel partners.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Sam.
Just the, sorry, any questions for that one?
Are there any other comments or questions on that? No. You wanted to say, Sam?
Yeah, there's just one more slide, last one, apologies. So this is, and please take this, and everybody with a pinch of salt, this is a very high level program that is still in sort of proposal and going through the details. But effectively, this picks up the six schemes. The green is the construction process, the other bits is our job. But effectively, we're looking to start the two Boston schemes, Marsh Lane and the Active Travel, in around April next year. The next critical thing to highlight is that Greensell and Springfield don't overlap. We can't have them working on those junctions at the same time because they're so close to each other in traffic management, and then within there, the Curtain Junction is later in the November time. We're also tying the Spalding Access Travel Scheme in with the Springfield because they're so close from a location perspective. So the intention is to start on site around April next year and have them complete by the bid requirements by March 25, but we can come back in future when that becomes more defined and as we come back for key decisions to actually progress these schemes. But that's the general intention, but that will almost certainly change as we go through the detailed design process, and I'll stop there.
Thank you for that, Sam. Are there any more comments or questions? Just one point, would it be possible to send a copy of these slides around to all of the members of the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee, please? That'd be good. Right, there are no more comments or questions, so I move that the committee endorse the contents of the verbal and visual presentation, and that we are satisfied with the progress reported on plans to deliver these six schemes. We also request that further updates will be reported to the committee in six months' time. Does anyone dissent? And if so, please indicate now. No? Thank you, that's agreed. Now, move on to the final item on the agenda, which is the committee's work program, and this item is on pages 71 to 74 of the agenda pack. This item enables the committee to comment on the content of our work program. The report will be presented by Kiara, our scrutiny officer, and the actions are to review the work program and highlight any additional scrutiny activity which could be included for the consideration in the work program. Over to you, Kiara.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. So in terms of the work program as it is standing today, since the dispatch of this agenda, there has only been one change, and that is for the next meeting on the 18th of July 2022. In this meeting, we will receive a highways quarter form performance update report, we will receive a highways gully cleansing repair and surface watering flood report, and the passenger transport annual update, and also we shall receive the winter plans. That has been now introduced from the list of items to be programmed. So that is the winter service plan for 2022, 2023. And this concludes my update to you, Mr Chairman, and to the members of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Kiara. Have we got any comments? Councillor Rowe.
Thank you again, Mr Chairman. At the last meeting, I just asked if it was possible for us to look at a schedule and a date to go around the Links Lab, and I was wondering if any progress is being made on that. Thank you.
I'm not sure. I mean, I haven't only been in this post for a week. I haven't managed to have a look at that yet. Kiara?
Yes, that is correct. Following the AGM, we were going to be looking at that proposal for a future meeting date. So, yes, it is still under consideration. Thank you.
I'll promise you, I'll put that on my list of priorities, councillor Rowe. Okay, we'll have a good look at it. Thank you. Any other comments, question? No. I therefore move that we note the report and approve the existing work program as detailed in pages 71 to 74. Does anyone dissent? If so, please indicate now. No? Thank you, that's agreed. So that brings us to the end of the meeting, and that concludes the business for today. So thank you for your attendance and a safe journey home to everyone. Thank you.